Brandis. And Mr. Hamkers.
Okay, and Stephen can see us, like I said, and Leah is sending him the link so that he could speak. So let's see, is it two o'clock? Oh, I'm late, sorry.
Still sorting.
It is 2:06. I think everyone else that we need is here and Stephen can see and hear, see, see and hear us. And she's connecting so he can speak. It's 2:06. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a joint meeting of the Cambria Services District Resource and Infrastructure Committee and Finance Committee Special Meeting. Director Stidell is the Chair of Finance and she and I kind of worked it out a little bit ahead of time and she has requested that I be the lead for this meeting. So we're going to establish a quorum. I have. I have James Webb here, David Pearson here, Michael Thomas here, and Stephen Seber. Here working on getting his audio together. And I am missing Brad Fowles, who is out of town, but it's it's an excuse to absence. Director Stidell, would you like to introduce your committee, please?
Thank you. The committee members that are here with us today are Mary Maher, Marvin Korn, Karen Christman, Cheryl McDonald. We do not have Ted Segler with us available today. He had a commitment that did not allow him to be able to support the meeting.
Okay.
So it is an excused absence also.
Thank you. Staff members present are our Utilities Manager, District Engineer Ray Renzo. And we have our Board Secretary Leah Redell, who is going to step out when she gets us all together and. General Manager John Weigold will take over as host. Who else do we have here? We have our Administrative Manager Pamela Duffield. And I do not see our new Finance Manager yet. I'm assuming she's going to be sitting in the conference room. Watching. And then we also have.
They're in the same office as Pam right now.
Okay, I see the top of her head.
This is Denise Fritz. I'd like to introduce you to all finance and all of our nice. Sorry, we were having trouble in the conference room. We don't have an internet connection, so. Me taking my laptop in there didn't help as much, so we're in here kind of starting to stay on camera.
Welcome aboard.
Okay.
Looking forward to meeting you.
Okay, I do not have a chairman's report other than. I was just going to mention that the procedure for today is to. Receive the presentation from Mr. Handlers, Mr. Brandis and Mr. Reyes. And then I will take public comment following that presentation, followed by the discussion with the committee members. So a public comment will be only on this presentation and I will be taking that after the presentation. Do we have any committee member communications? Mr. Thomas.
Just one question. If we've flagged, you know, like errors and errata grammar in the presentation, should we. Communicate that or just let that go?
Errors or. Okay, so do you mean, so for example, if you don't understand an acronym or.
Obvious typos.
Obvious typos. Um, what, why don't we wait until the end of the presentation for that? Okay. Okay. And are there any other committee member communications from either committee? Okay, seeing none. As I said, we're going to take public comment after the presentation. So General Manager Weigold. Would you like to introduce the regular business item, please?
Yes, Chairman Dean. The the only item on today's agenda is item two A, which is to receive and discuss a presentation by Alex Handlers. In the California Special District Association Finance Team. On the funding process for wastewater treatment system investment grade audit projects. Will receive a presentation. By Mr. Handlers. That presentation is, you should all have a copy of. For those in the audience, a copy is available on our website. Attached to the agenda. Again, this is, this is an overview of the financing process. For the wastewater side of the projects that we did the. Rate increases for. This does not include any of the projects for water. Or anything outside of wastewater. So today we're only finding, we're only focused on discussing the. Financing process for the wastewater. And those are largely locked down. Now, after a thorough vetting through R and I and financing that culminated in March and then reviewed by the board. So the the projects are largely locked down and and those projects have gone out to bid. We're getting an update on those bids, obviously because of the effects of inflation. And any other ongoing increasing costs as a result of the last six months since they were last updated. We don't have those costs yet. But Alex will take us through that process on how the board. Can identify a range of funding for those projects. In the event they have to be adjusted. So with that, I will turn the the meeting back over to Chairman Dean.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Handlers, would you like to begin your presentation, please?
Sure, and maybe I'll just share a screen and again, the background of this presentation, it's. You know, to present kind of a summary of the financing and kind of the key legal terms, key. You know, provisions, et cetera, that we thought would be good for everyone to be familiar with. There's a whole big pile of documents. In which these provisions are detailed out in legalese that. Nobody, you're welcome to read. They'll be part of the agenda packet that goes out. On for the next council meeting, but also an opportunity, I think, for both committees to. You know, hear the information and ask questions. We've got the finance team here. Let me share my presentation. Share screen. You. Can folks see the, do I need to blow it up at all? It's okay the way it is?
Looks good.
Okay. And what the financing is called, and just on the title page, it's wastewater revenue certificates of participation. That are going to be used to fund the projects, at least that's the plan. So this first slide again, just gives a little overview of the stuff we're going to cover. I won't go, you'll be hearing it all, you know, a little about the financing team, the key covenants, et cetera. But first, I just wanted to introduce our financing team, who's kind of the core financing team on this, who's on the call. Obviously myself, but maybe I'll have Rick Brandis. Rick is with Brandis Tolman. Division of Oppenheimer, they're the underwriter, and Rick is a consultant to CSDA Finance Corporation. And we also have Albert Reyes on the line as well. He's a partner with Q-TAC Rock. They're a bond counsel firm, Albert serving both as bond counsel and disclosure counsel. And he's also a consultant to the California Special Districts Association. Finance corporations. Let me turn it over to you two to introduce yourselves. Look at my, can I introduction afterwards and we'll take it away.
Sure. Hi, good afternoon. I'm Rick Brandis. I apologize for being in my car. I am parked outside. The Discovery Bay Community Services District.
My hand right here.
Okay.
Should see that.
I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me? Alex, can they hear?
We can, we can hear you. Yeah, we hear you loud and clear. I think there was just someone else was unmuted and we heard them all talking in the background.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, I'm in my car. So I apologize for that, but. We do. As an, as an underwriter, our job, which. I know later on in the presentation, we'll have a slide to describe everyone's role. But basically, our role as the underwriter is to price. The debt. Structure the debt with the municipal advisor, which is Alex. And sell the debt. To investors. I myself have been doing that for over thirty five years. And as Alex mentioned, I am a consultant. To the CSDA Finance Corporation. We are the bond underwriter for the corporation. And. Thank you for inviting us today and I look forward to working with all of you.
I think we saw Albert there too.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Alex. So Albert Reyes, I am Bond and Disclosure Counsel to the District for the financing. I'm a partner here at Q-TAC Rock, which is a nationwide law firm and. We have a nationwide practice in terms of public finance as well with offices pretty much throughout the country. Doing public finance in a lot of other states. And so I, as Bond and Disclosure Counsel, I prepared the legal documents for the financing and also the preliminary official statement. Which goes to potential investors and that 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 official statement describes, you know, the district. In detail in terms of its finances and its operations. Will describe the wastewater system. And so we've been working with the district and getting that document prepared for the financing, but. My role is to help, you know, prepare those legal documents and the disclosure document. And then at the end, I give a legal opinion as well regarding the tax exemption of the financing for the investors into the district. So. So yeah, so that's, that's my role is on Council Disclosure Council.
Thank you, Albert and Rick. And I'm Alex Handlers, as you know, I'm with the firm Bartle Wells Associates. We've worked with the district. Over the years, normally on financial planning and rate studies, but our firm is a municipal advisory firm. I've been in doing municipal advisory work. On, you know, bonds, certificates of participation, all sorts of types of financings for over twenty years. And I'm also a board member of the National Association of Municipal Advisors. But moving on to our, just the presentation. Just the first slide, just covering the background on the project. And I think folks from the committees are already familiar with this, but. We just wanted to, if anyone from the public's watching, just a quick reminder. That, you know, Cambria Community Services District. As a district, you've got a lot of aging. Equipment, a lot of aging infrastructure, you're in coastal conditions and you've been making it work, but you've just got a lot of stuff that. Is at the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced and upgraded with newer equipment, more efficient processes, et cetera. So I think this process goes back to 2018. The district was working with PG&E as part of its Sustainable Solutions Turnkey. Program, which started a multi-year, my understanding is a collaborative effort with the district and PG&E and. Southland Energy and MKN and Associates, who specializes in water wastewater infrastructure. To, you know, really do an evaluation of. What needs to happen to the treatment plan and other key improvements to the rest of the system. To, you know, bring it, bring it back up to good condition. One of the highest priority projects, I know there was a whole process whittling down what really needs to happen, what's the most crucial stuff? And that was reflected in the investment grade audit report. That came out last November and included mostly, you know, wastewater treatment plan upgrades were the biggest proportion of the project. What I'm calling the project is kind of an all encompassing term that includes all the. The small improvements in there. And also improvements to a number of the sewer collection system lift stations. As well as some other upgrades to the wastewater system. And again, the projects are. Really aimed at addressing existing deficiencies, improving reliability and efficiency. Replacing old stuff and putting the system in condition where it could. More reliably meet existing and future permit requirements. So PG&E had actually gone out and solicited bids. I think based on, you know, roughly thirty percent design criteria for all these different projects. And got real price bids of about twelve point one million. As manager John Weigold just mentioned, those project bids were good through, I think, December of last year. So they're not up to date and the district's been working with PG&E to get updated cost estimates. Which we hope won't change very much because those last bids, they weren't just pie in the sky engineering estimates, they were real bids. So the project cost will probably change a little bit, but hopefully just a little bit. This next slide shows a summary of the the projects and this table should look familiar. I think it's one of the tables that the committees. Have been honing over the last period of time. Where there's a base project at the top of about seven point five million. Again, that's a lot of treatment plan upgrades there. And then there's about four and a half million of other improvements, lift stations, et cetera. So. In terms of what's being recommended to finance these projects, the district doesn't have a spare. Twelve point one million sitting around in the wastewater fund. Most agencies don't when they have to deal major projects like this. So. Kind of based on evaluation of different alternatives, what's being recommended. Is something that's called wastewater revenue certificates of participation. Sometimes in the industry, they're just called certificates or COPs. And I think what folks should know is they're essentially the same as bonds from the district's perspective. You're going to have the same legal covenants you would if this was a bond sale. The reason they're not bonds is because the district, like many agencies in California, doesn't have statutory authority to just go out and issue revenue bonds. Unless it's for a refunding of some prior debt. So that's why most districts in California and other agencies. Very commonly use these certificates of participation or COPs. Why do they use them? Well, in a case like yours, they're the lowest cost financing option for major projects. If you had to do a, you know, a small. You know, five hundred thousand dollar project and you could just do a ten year repayment term. You know, there are other sources of cheaper financing that might make sense for doing an equipment lease or something like that. But when you get to larger dollar amounts. Using something like COPs or bonds, it gives you access to the tax exempt municipal bond market. Where these are going to be offered by public sale. So you're going to get the lowest interest rates you possibly can. And also with COPs, it gives you a lot of structure, a lot of flexibility. In structuring the debt. So you can go out thirty years, whereas if you do like an equipment lease, maybe they only want to go ten to fifteen years at most. The way the COPs are structured, it's akin to an installment purchase contract. And what with an installment purchase contract, the district is technically making installment payments over the next thirty years to. Purchase the project. So those installment payments are akin to debt service. So a lot of. You may hear me use the term debt service throughout, but it's really the same as these installment purchase. Payments. And who are you buying it from? What do you mean you're making these payments? Well, there's kind of a, in the legal documents, you're technically buying the project. From CSDA Financing Corporation. Who sort of acts as a, you know, temporary intermediary. I note here to just legally facilitate the transaction. And at the same time, they're facilitating the transaction, they're signing away all their rights. So they're not involved in future years whatsoever. And I'll explain the structure a little bit more in a few slides, but. We also wanted to cover kind of in terms of the big picture. The financing, it's going to be sized to fund the project costs, which are, you know, currently estimated at twelve point one million. Plus cost of issuance, there's costs for, you know, bond counsel, disclosure counsel, financial advisor. Rating agency trustee, et cetera. And also the underwriters. Have a fee they charge for performing their services. And there's also likely in this case going to be fees for bond insurance. Because I can almost guarantee the bond insurance is going to result in net savings for the district. So the premium you pay will be offset by. By more savings. We're looking at a thirty year repayment term for these, which is pretty common for for projects like this. We're looking at tax exempt fixed interest rates. That was one thing. I know some of your committee chairs in prior conversations, we've talked about. So these interest rates are going to be locked in. So even if the market interest rates skyrocket. You're going to be locked in with your interest rates and your payments for the next thirty years. Until such point in time that you decide to refinance this for, if there's such an opportunity arises in the future. Now, when we did the rate study, we tried to phase in the rates as gradually as possible on the sewer side. There were. Three, seven and a half percent rate increases over the first three years. So in line with that, the way the repayment for this is going to be structured, it's not exactly. Level annual debt service payments every year, because the first year it's going to be interest only. So a little bit of a reduced payment. Then after that, we've assumed, you know, level, roughly level annual payments every single year. And the way it works with bonds or COPs, it's not like a mortgage. Where, you know, you get a mortgage for your house, you have the exact same identical payment, you borrow. Whatever, a hundred thousands of dollars and it's got a single rate. With bonds and COPs, it's actually a whole series of maturities. So it's almost like there's a two year. Loan and a three year loan and a four year loan and a five year loan, all the way out to thirty years. And each year has its own principal amount that gets retired that year. And each separate individual payment also comes with its own interest rates. You have a whole series of interest rates. That change from year to year. They tend to be lower in the early years. Where it might be, you know, two and a half percent and it goes to, you know, two and three quarter, three percent. And by the time you get out to thirty years, it may be, you know, four and a half percent, something along that range. And the way the payments work with bonds and COPs is there's two payments per year of interest. So half the interest would be due in March. The other half in September. And then there's a single principal payment in September of each year. Another thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, even though the rates are locked in. That you're going to be able to refinance this after roughly eight to ten years. The details haven't been worked out yet. If interest rates are lower or if you can get any, you know, reduce your debt service payments in future years. Often with tax exempt financings like this, the investors don't want to give you. A big pot, all their money and then have you turn around a year later because interest rates drop twenty five. You know, point two two five percent or some small amount. So guess what? We're redoing it. We're going to pay you off. So. Typically with bonds and COPs, there's historically been like a ten year period where you were not. Allowed to call the bonds at your option. But we think we can, you know, hopefully whittle that back to eight to ten years. You can refund it at any time, I should point out, before that eight to ten year period. It just would be called an advanced refunding and you could not do that on a tax exempt basis. So you'd get higher interest rates. But there are times where, especially in recent years, agencies have been refunding debt. On a taxable basis if they can get savings. We do anticipate use of bond insurance, as I said, and what bond insurance allows you to do. Is change your rating from the district's underlying bond rating, which could be like, I'll just make up an A minus or something like that. And instead, the bonds would be sold with the. The the credit rating of the bond insurer and the bond insurers have a double A rating. So with a double A rating, it's less credit risk and you get lower interest rates. But in order to do that, the bond insurers charge you a fee for using their. Bond rating and agreeing to ensure the bonds in case the district ever had a payment default. So typically, they take about half of the benefit. So for an agency like yours, it typically makes sense to get bond insurance because you're still going to get significant benefit. Of using a bond insurer. And also we're assuming the bond insurer would use a reserve surety bond. Which is in lieu of having a separate cash funded. Debt service reserve fund, which will say roughly one year of debt service. Which historically was common with bonds and the trustee would hold that money. And if the district ever failed to payment, ever failed to make a payment. They'd already have one year of debt service there and they can just make sure all the investors got paid off. And that would give the district or an agency enough time to work at its finances. Well, these days it's more common. Not to have cash in the reserve fund. But for an agency such as yours to have an insurance policy that meets that. Reserve fund requirement. So we anticipate bond insurance and reserve surety bond will most, both make financial sense. The other thing I was going to add is, we know that there's been a whittling down of the project, but. You know, from having worked with many agencies over the years, when someone's got a big list of projects and they start working through it. Sometimes there might need to be a change or you start working on one project and it costs a little more. Or something else, an emergency crops up. As you're working on these and you need to focus the money elsewhere. If that happens, the way the documents are written, it allows the district. To, you know, change, to swap in a project or to make some changes. So you're not locked into stone, as long as you're using the funds for eligible wastewater system capital improvements. The district would have the ability to, you know, revise a project or reprioritize as needed. Let me just pause there for a second. I thought maybe we'll. See if anyone has any questions and maybe I'll ask as we move along the presentation. If people have questions, there's something they don't understand. Let's try to get that addressed as we go. So we don't, you know, someone doesn't have any confusion as we keep moving along. And if it's an involved question that might have a long response, maybe we can just kick that to the end of the presentation. But let me just pause there and see if any. Committee members or anyone has any initial questions at this point.
Okay, let's just see if the, any of the panelists have questions. We'll take public comment questions at the end. We have one with a hand up.
Can I speak? Can you hear me?
Can you use the hands? The yellow hand at the bottom, that helps.
That helps us.
That we have.
I don't, oh, God. I don't have.
You'll see a raised hand down in.
Bottom of your screen should be a place to raise your hand.
I do not see.
You know where the banner is, where you've got your mute or in order to stop the video?
Yes, it says.
If you look further along there, you'll see the participants. And then raise hand.
It doesn't have a raised hand on it. Says participants, share screen. And record. Okay, I, oh, there's a hand up here on top. I have a question. Can I ask it?
You're too ahead of you, Cheryl.
Okay, my question is, all these additional fees. Are, are, are they paid out of pocket? Are they wrapped in this bond? All the fees to acquire this?
All the fees are funded by the bonds themselves.
Okay.
And most of them are contingent upon the closing of the bond sale. So the district doesn't have to pay anything out of pocket.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Michael.
Two questions. The first. Regarding the life of the assets, I've heard in prior CCSD board meetings. Members of the public challenged the thirty year span. So. Just. Want. You to be prepared with the explanation of why it makes sense for a thirty year repayment. Period when some of the assets replaced may have a shorter lifespan. And. You want to hear both questions at once or?
Well, sure. Well, you know, you do have some assets, right? There might be some pieces of equipment that don't have thirty year lifespan and some do, but. The principle isn't all out in thirty years. It's being paid every year throughout. So. You know, the weighted average maturity is probably closer to something like twenty years. At the end of the day, so it's kind of a whole spread of stuff. But I'm not the most expert on what the lifespan of all the detailed projects are. But often when an agency's got a whole mix of projects, some of them are even going to have longer than thirty year lifespan, some of the. Infrastructure that's being put in. So I think it's kind of like a mix of stuff. That's out there that kind of falls within the. The norms for using thirty year financing is my understanding.
Okay, and no doubt there will be more questions from the public on that. And I also wanted to ask of interest, if. If Cambrians chime in that they would like to invest in these COPs. You know, kind of at some point be prepared to explain how to do so.
Yeah, that's a good question. And we get that from some other communities too at some point. And I will defer to Rick, but sometimes the underwriters can, you know, provide the opportunity where folks can. You know, get in on the initial, initial public offering. And sometimes they do that through their own investment advisors or other things like that. But the underwriter can give an opportunity for people to, you know, I think. Be one of the initial purchasers of bonds. Right up front.
Alex, let me chime in.
Yeah, please, Rick, yeah.
Okay, that's correct, Alex. We have. I think five private wealth offices around California. I think five private wealth offices around California, including one in San Francisco and I believe one in Palo Alto. So we sell our bonds through our, our network. Of, you may want to call them brokers or financial advisors. So we certainly will make them available to people who live in Cambria. If anybody would like to open an account with Oppenheimer. They can buy the bonds through Oppenheimer. Or direct us where to sell them to, such as an investment advisory firm. Who, and we work with a lot of them too. But there will be that opportunity.
Okay, Mary?
Hi, so I just want to clarify the interest rate. On the third bullet, you talked about there's fixed interest rates and they're locked in, but then when we were talking on the sixth bullet down about the. Principal amounts due each year and separate interest rates. Could you clarify maybe that bullet and are the rates locked or not?
Yeah, good question. The rates are locked, but it's not just one rate. You might have the year two maturity might have a rate of, you know. Two-point-two-five percent, then the year three maturity might be two-point-seven-five, then the year ten maturity might be. So it's like a whole series of locked-in rates. And then that's how it works, but they're all locked in. We don't know what the rates are yet, because those would be determined at the type, at the time of the public offering. When Rick and his firm, Oppenheimer, would market these bonds to investors and. There's a whole bunch of funds and stuff that participate in these bond issuances, and it's at that point that the rates would be locked in. And that would be reflecting the, kind of the market conditions at the time of sale, so. Rates, as folks know, have gone up quite a bit from where they were last, you know, November, December. And they've since, I think, tailed back down a little bit in recent weeks, but they're still quite low by historical standards, they're just not. As extremely low as they were late last year, which is unfortunate, but. That's just the reality, there's still, you know, good rates compared to historical numbers and those get locked in at the pricing.
Okay, does any of the other committee members have a question for clarification before we have Alex move on? Don't see any hands, so take it away, Alex.
Okay, good questions, by the way. This slide here shows a little more detail of the legal structure. Which is typically confusing from people who don't come from our industry. And really, there's, in the legal documents, there's. Three key parties who are kind of part of the legal transaction. There's obviously Cambria CSD. There's CSDA Financing Corporation and there's Bank of New York Mellon, who had served as the trustee. And that's where I was saying, at the end of the day, Cambria is going to be making payments to the trustee. The trustee represents the bondholders, and it's just like paying debt service payments, but. Because it's this installment purchase structure, which is legally needed. CSDA Financing Corporation acts as like the temporary legal facilitator, so CSDA. Financing Corporation, they acquire the project according to the legal documents. On behalf of the district, and then they sell it back to the district for a series of installment payments, which I call debt service. Or akin to debt service. At the same time they do that, they're assigning all their rights in the project and the proceeds. And the construction, all to the district, so the district's getting all the bond money. For the COP money, the district's going to, you know, build its projects. And oversee all that and have the full, you know, authority to do everything they need to do. CSDA, then, so now Cambria is making payments to CSDA Financing Corporation, but wait. CSDA Financing Corporation doesn't want to have any involvement in this. They simultaneously sign away their rights to receive the payments. To the trustee. And the trustee again acts as the, kind of the, the party who's responsible to the bondholder. So the trustee receives the payments and they in turn disperse it out to the bondholders through an electronic system. That goes through kind of a clearinghouse called DTC in New York. So at the end of the day, CSDA Financing Corporation was temporarily involved. In the same instant, they legally came into being in this transaction, they've signed all their rights away. They're out of the picture. Cambria CSD is left with the money and the authority to build the project and makes its payments directly to the trustee. For the bondholders, so it's just, it's just like the way a bond works from Cambria's perspective at the end of the day. Except for that legal twist, and that legal twist is often confusing for a lot of people, especially. If you didn't know this and you tried to read through the many, many pages of legal documents that I know. Some of your, your board members have and had some good questions about those.
Okay, Director Stidell has a question on that.
So Alex, could you please spell out what DTC is and what purpose? It is serving, why it would exist?
Yes, there's something called a depository trust company. And they act as kind of the electronic clearinghouse for all bond payments, so. When BNY Mellon, as the trustee, receives the district's payments, there may be. Fifty investors that are owed interest and principal and stuff like that. The bank doesn't keep a list of all these people and change it. Instead, they forward the money on to depository trust company. That keeps all the electronic records of where the money needs to go, so maybe there's some people who own, you know, Vanguard funds. And they bought the bonds through there and someone else through Schwab. So then the DTC wires the money to Vanguard to then send to the account of. Whoever the individual is that owns the bond, so the DTC is just kind of. They're after the trustee, that's who the trustee forwards the money on to. And they're, then they, you know, electronically distribute the money to the various. Funds or individuals who are owed the, the money to make sure everyone's getting paid appropriately. And this has, this has been going on a long time, all these bonds for many years now, they're all electronic. They call them book entry only, so it's not like there are people have coupons of paper and they're going to be coming to the trustee and saying, hey, you owe me my. Interest payment, which is the way it originally was in prior times.
Did that answer your question?
I just wanted to verbalize one thing for, particularly with the folks who are listening. Is with that explanation, I wanted everyone to understand that. The intricacies of handling payments to the multiple and. And the product to the end purchaser is not something that CCSD isn't involved with. We don't have to be involved in the details associated with that, there's, there's an entire support. Process and function that goes on, but it isn't one that we have to manage and it isn't one that we have to. Expend ourselves on or have resources on site to handle. So that people aren't concerned that we're going to have to hire fifty people to take care of handling of this.
Now, you're going to get one bill, we'll call it, every six months from the trustee. You know, what's due for the principal and the interest, and that's all you pay, you know, you make one payment to the trustee. But yeah, you, you don't have to try to follow around all the bondholders. Which you don't want to do, nobody does, wants to do that. The next slide, just to, you know, highlight what some of the key legal covenants are that the district is signing on to. When you issue bonds or COPs, it's not like a bank loan, it's not like a mortgage for your house where. You know, the bank. Has, your house is collateral and you fail to make a payment, they're going to come in and take your house and sell it and get paid back. In this case, there's no, no one owns any rights to any of your system whatsoever and is going to go try to sell your wastewater treatment plans or anything like that. Instead, for water and wastewater agencies, the debt is typically secured. Solely by the net revenues of the wastewater system in this case, since it's wastewater debt, so. It's a lien only on the revenues coming into the wastewater system, no, there's no overlap to water or taxes from the general fund, et cetera. And what the net revenues are defined as, it's the total revenues of the wastewater system. Minus the wastewater systems operating and maintenance expenses, because those have to be funded first. In order to provide service and, you know, people paying the rate, so. What's left over after paying operating and maintenance expenses is called the net revenues. And that's, you know, that money is used to pay debt service before anything else. And it needs to be adequate, not just to exactly pay debt service, but to actually provide a little extra buffer. To make sure there's enough, you know, cash flow coming into pay debt service and provide a little bit more, and you need that buffer anyway. Because it's out of that additional buffer after paying debt service that you're paying your own. Pay-as-you-go capital projects, or if you have any, you know, unsecured equipment leases or, you know, anything like that. And in line with that, the one thing. That a water and wastewater agency can do to generate funds is raise rates. So it's really your rates and charges that are the underlying repayment security. And in the documents, the covenants are that the district has to, it's legally covenanting. That it's going to raise its rates and fees as needed to. Generate net revenues that are at least a hundred and twenty percent of annual debt service. So you've got to raise your rates and fees such that when you look at the next year. You're going to be paying all your O and M plus have enough for a hundred and twenty percent of debt service. In addition to that, you're given a little bit of flexibility. Now, our projections show you're going to, you're going to, you know, more than exceed this one-twenty. Coverage with the rates that were adopted, which is why, you know, that kind of factored into the rate study. Now. In the legal documents, there's an allowance for something called the rate stabilization fund, which. Might be different than what folks think of as a, you know, rates stabilization fund, just for, you know, sewer rates. But this is a rate stabilization fund for the debt service purposes. And what it allows you to do is use some of your fund reserves to help meet that one-twenty. Percent debt service coverage requirement, so. For example, if you had a strange year and the revenues went way down. And you were only at, you know, a hundred percent of debt service coverage. This would allow you to transfer money in from your reserves in essence. And count it towards meeting that twenty percent. And the way the rate stabilization funds work. When you put money into the rate stabilization fund, it's really just transferring from one pocket to the other. It counts against you for debt service, and when you put it back over, when you need it. It helps you meet your debt service coverage requirement, so it's just a tool that's giving you. Flexibility to meet the debt service coverage requirement. If ever needed. The other key covenant is an additional debt test. Obviously, no one wants to lend you money. And then have you turn around three weeks later and say, hey, guess what, we're issuing another billion dollars of debt. So we don't know if you're ever going to get paid back, so when investors give you money, they want some assurances that you're not going to take on any additional debt. Unless you've got the financial security already locked in to repay that debt and meet some basic financial covenants. So the way it works in this case is. If you're ever in need to issue additional, we don't, we're not foreseeing the need for any additional debt. That's on legal parity with this existing debt. But imagine, you know, twelve years down the line, you'll suddenly have another, there's a new permit requirement and you've got to go fund. Six million dollars of more new treatment plant process. You could do that, but you just have to make sure that the, the net revenues from the prior year, such as from the audit. Plus any adopted rate increases. Would get you back above that one-hundred-and-twenty percent debt service coverage requirement, accounting for the existing debt plus the new debt. So that's how it works. And the additional revenues not only can include rate increases, it could also include any new revenues from growth. However, there's, there's no limit, you can't issue any debt that's senior than this debt. You could issue debt that's on legal parity. If you meet this additional debt test. But there's no legal limitations on subordinate debt, so. The district's not hamstrung if they have to issue, you know, need to do an equipment lease for a vehicle or some equipment or a vector truck. You've got a couple of equipment leases out there right now, or vehicle leases that are being paid off. And those, those don't really factor into the picture because they're not secured by the net revenues and they're kind of considered a lower priority repayment. Maybe I'll just pause there too and defer. The group, if there's any questions on these basic legal covenants.
Does anyone have any questions? Oh, yes, one person does, hang on. Oh, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, just want to understand the rate stabilization fund, because it's, it sounds like. Each year. CCSD wastewater treatment system revenues have got to exceed debt service by twenty percent. So how does the rate stabilization fund get funded?
Yeah, it's, it's really just the district. Opting to take some of its wastewater. Fund reserves and designate them as rate stabilization funds, so it's a pretty simple process. And we would recommend you do that this very first year. You know, before this debt service phases and just have a little bit of a buffer there, it's just a designation. You can still use the reserves, whatever you want, so there's no limitations on using this money. You could spend it down on other things too, it's just kind of a technically a designation that, hey, we've put. You know, two-hundred thousand into a rate stabilization fund, and once you've designated it. You may not change that for seven years, but all of a sudden year eight. It turns out, oh no, this year we only generated debt service coverage of. You know, of a hundred and three percent, not one-twenty. So what this is saying, well, you know, that's not a problem. We're just going to transfer two-hundred thousand dollars or whatever we need to over from the rate stabilization fund. Again, just designate that it's coming back to our, coming out of the rate stabilization fund. And then you can count that as revenues in that year for meeting the debt service coverage test. So it just gives, it gives agencies a little more flexibility to meet coverage. In future years, because there may have been a one-time thing that happened, I've worked with a lot of agencies, particularly in the wastewater side. Where the operating expenses are pretty level, maybe they're increasing, you know, they're increasing a little each year. But all of a sudden, there's a broken something and they had to. Run the system at full blast while they're making the repairs and their operating costs spike up for a year. And it's like, they could use something like a rate stabilization fund if needed to, to meet the test. And the way the test also works, which is nice too, there's another provision in there that I didn't kind of highlight in here that. Even if you had kind of a one-year anomaly, as long as the rates that you were adopted were adequate to kind of. Project meeting debt service coverage in the next fiscal year. You're fine, and that's, you know, so you've adopted, you've already adopted three seven-and-a-half percent rate increases, one which already went into effect on July one. Plus, there's a couple of authorization for future inflationary increases. So if something happened in, you know, in one of these years. Where for some reason you weren't going to meet coverage, but it was kind of a one-time temporary thing, but. The rates were already adopted to meet coverage the next year. You know, then there's, there's no. No one's going to force the district to raise rates and charges to catch back up, you've already done it. So that's another, you know, way of trying to make this as flex, we try to make it as flexible as possible. For the district to meet the standard legal covenants.
Okay, thanks, yeah, obviously, let's not have a bad first year. And it sounds like. The calculation of how much we need in the rate stabilization fund is going to be an important topic of discussion and. I'm sure, you know, in the months ahead, we'll hear how Mrs. Duffield and Fritz are. Are thinking of how we, how we figure that out.
Yeah, and again, it's really just a designation, so it doesn't. It doesn't restrict you any more than your regular reserves, so. It's just a designation, and if the finances work that you can afford to do that while still meeting the coverage. We recommend doing that, you know, right up front, so there's a little buffer there to meet this coverage requirement in future years, if ever needed. So the key, next I was going to cover the key parties, and we've already kind of alluded to this somewhat, obviously, the district. The main one here, you're the, the district is the issuer, you're going to be building the project, paying the debt service. And also district legal councils involved as well, they'll be reviewing stuff and they issue an opinion at closing as well. And then you've already met Albert, Albert Reyes from Kuntak Rock, so he already kind of mentioned his role. He's been drafting extensive legal documents on this and there are a lot, which we'll cover in a minute. And the official statement, he also provides all the legal opinions at the end of the day that the debt was, you know, issued accord appropriately. And that this, you know, it's taxing, qualifies for tax exempt. And that this, you know, it's taxing qualifies for tax exempt financing. Um, and you've met Rick Brandis also from, you know, Brandis Tolman, it's Division of Oppenheimer. Um, so Rick mentioned his role, they're marketing the debt to the investors and, and doing the pricing and selling the debt. And it, after the pricing. You know, typically takes, you know, two, three weeks later, all the final documents are signed, everything's locked in. Then the underwriter is the one who's wiring the money. To the trustee, the, you know, the twelve point one million, whatever the number ends up being. For the district's project fund, which in the documents is termed an acquisition fund. And also for the cost of issuance, which the trustee pays at the district's direction. Um, I already mentioned me, I'm the, the municipal advisor. In the old days, it was called financial advisor. Or independent financial advisor. So, you know, I've been working, you know, coordinating the financing process. We review everything. We've already kind of had a lot of our comments, you know, kind of hashed through. With, uh, with folks, uh, we provide advice on the debt issuance process. To make sure it's on the most favorable terms and conditions for the district. Possible. I actually had a legal fiduciary responsibility to represent the district's interests throughout this whole process. Not those of anyone else. So I am, uh, you know, fully working on the district's behalf. On this whole process. And I've been in the field for over twenty years, as I mentioned. Um, so that's the core folks, but there are other players involved. We just wanted to, to highlight. One is the trustee. There, again, they're typically a bank with a trust department that acts on behalf of the bondholders. So. They hold the project funds. On behalf of the district, whenever the district needs money, they just submit a requisition over. And they're the ones who are going to be billing the district. And then to make debt, you know, these installment payments for debt service. And so the district will wire the money to the trustee, you know, forwards it on. Uh, to make sure the investors get paid. There's also C S D A Financing Corp Authority who have, I guess, financing corporation, but. They're the, you know, seller. So they're, they're, they've got that temporary role to facilitate the transaction and they've assigned all their. Their rights away. Um, there's also going to be a bond rating that we need to get. From Standard and Poor's, it's, you know, S and P global ratings is kind of their, their latest, uh, term that they use and. They're going to be doing a rating of the district based on all the underlying fundamentals of the district, regional economy. The wastewater enterprises, finances, ability to pay debt. Um, and typically they'll issue. An underlying rating of the, of specifically for these bonds, so for these wastewater revenue C O Ps. And they'll also assuming stuff, uh, we, we use bond insurance. They're also going to be, you know, validating the rating of the bond insurer so that the. The, uh, the certificates will be sold with the bond insurers double A rating. And I've already mentioned the other key players, bond insurer. So, you know, they're ensuring the repayment of the bonds. So if you, if the district ever fails to make a payment to the investors, the bond insurer steps in to make that payment. That rarely ever happens, especially with like water and wastewater bonds, because. It's rare there's ever any default on behalf of an agency, but if there ever was. The, the trustee holds this insurance policy on behalf of the bondholders. And can tap into it if the district ever doesn't pay the trustee. Well, then the, in turn, they would turn around and. You know, they don't want to have to pay anything. Then they come after the district, hey, what's going on? They want to get made whole at the end of the day. So the district would still be obliged to pay the insurer back. Um, if the insurer had to step in and make a payment temporarily for the district. The district ultimately is legally responsible for the payment, but. You know, it's so rare that happens. Um, I don't think I've ever been involved in the bond insurer having to, you know, try to get the money back from a district. Um, and the bond insurer may also provide the surety bond in lieu of a cash funded reserve fund. It's a policy that meets the reserve requirement. So again, there's going to be an analysis that gets done. Before the bonds are priced, the bond insurance is going to be bid out to the, you know, bond insurers that are out there. And there's really two main one. These days, there used to be more like five, but with the last financial crisis in two thousand eight or so, some of them. You know, stopped being in the business. And so it'll be bid out. And if the insurance bids come out such that it makes sense, financial sense for the district. To use bond insurance, we'll use it. And if not, it won't, but. We can almost guarantee you it will make sense because you're going to get a lot more savings from using the bond insurance. Than the actual cost of the bond insurance premium. But any questions on the parties and roles? No, I'll go on to legal documents.
Uh, Director Stidell.
Uh, so. Let's see, no, that's okay. My mic was on. Um, Alex indicated that, um, be going out to. These, uh, two major bond insurers to. Uh, to see what, uh, could get. And does that mean the C C S D. Is going to do that, or is that something one of the, the other key parties is involved in doing?
Yeah, on behalf of C C D S D, this will become, the district doesn't do any of this. Typically, the underwriter does it and we're typically involved in the process as well. Um, you know, bidding it out, making sure they've got all the information they need. To make an accurate insurance, you know, assessment of what they want to. Bid. And also they typically don't, they won't give you a bid until they get the, the bond rating. So this happens a little later in the process before the bonds are marketed to the investors or right at the very outset of that process.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is legal documents and there's a whole bunch of them. Again, all these documents are, are going to be in the agenda packets that go out, I think. Maybe Thursday of this week for the, for the, uh, the board meeting on the twenty first is what we're aiming for. And I'll just quickly run down what these are. The main one is a resolution. That the district board is going to adopt or consider. And what this is doing, this is the document, the resolution that authorizes the district to issue debt. Subject to certain parameters. There's going to be a maximum not to exceed amount. There'll be some other legal parameters there as well. And this resolution. Also approves of. The form of a number of these other documents. So it's not approving the final version of the documents. It's approving the form of them. Because a lot of these other legal documents don't get finalized till after the bond sale. So we don't know specifically what the principal amounts will be each year and what the interest rates are. Um, et cetera. So. The board approves the form of them. And also approves certain designated officers of the district to sign on to the final revisions with approval of district council. So I think the way it's currently written, the president of the board and the district manager. Are listed as the officers of the district, although the board can authorize other people to do, to be, you know. The officers as well. So they're the ones who would be signing, executing the final documents on behalf of the district. Then there's the preliminary and final official statements. P O S and O S is often called in the industry. The P O S is kind of the preliminary one. And that's, again, it's, it's just preliminary. That's the offering document that the underwriter uses to market. The, the district's debt to all the different investors out there. And it, you know, as Albert mentioned earlier on, it describes the. All the legal covenants, how the, the debt works, how the certificates work, as well as the district. It's wastewater enterprise and key information about the wastewater enterprise that would give investors. Adequate information to make an informed decision. It also lists all the risks. There's a bunch of other information in there as well. Um, most importantly, the P O S. The official statement has to include all material information for the investors. So you can't omit something like. Let's say there's a legal suit for, you know, a hundred million dollars that the district's about to lose. You'd have to put that in there through some. You know, s- some others, whatever, anything that's, you know, relevant that could affect the district's ability to repay debt. Has got to be included in there. There's often a lot of immaterial stuff that doesn't get included in there. Like, oh, by the way, we owe. You know, ten dollars, uh, to. The office supply stores, we forgot to pay them for pencil. I mean, that stuff's irrelevant, but it's more the big stuff. And then. What happens is, is Rick and his team are going to be circulating the P O S. Prior to the sale, and that's what the investors are kind of making the bids and decisions based on. And then after the sale, within seven days, the, the preliminary official statement is finalized and all the final. Dollar amounts and interest rates and terms get put in there. And that has to be sent to the investors within seven days of the, of the, the bonds, the, the per, the pricing date. Then there's a whole bunch of legal documents that kind of lay out all the legal provisions. And the main one is the installment purchase contract. That's between C S D A Finance Corporation and Cambria. And that. You know, authorizes the debt proceeds to be used by Cambria to build the project. It details, uh, the district's requirements to make these installment payments and has all the key. Legal covenants that Cambria is signing on to, which, you know, same as bond covenants. Um, there's an assignment agreement. Between C S D A Finance Corporation, the trustee where C S D A is assigning its. Authority to receive payments over to the trustee. So now the trustee is going to be the one who has all legal responsibility. For receiving the bond payments and the C O P payments and forwarding them onto the bondholders. There's a trust agreement between the trustee. C D A, C S D A Financing Corporation and the district. And this is where the, you know, Bank of New York Mellon would serve as trustee. So they're getting authorized to issue these certificates. Which are the, that's what the payments are being made based on. And it details all the trustees obligations. They're, you know, they're going to be at, at the end of the. After the bond sale process, they're going to be, it's going to be detailed, how much money is going to the project fund and how much money they're putting toward the cost of issuance fund. Things like that into this trust agreement. There's also a purchase contract or it could be called the, you know, the certificate purchase contract. And that's between the underwriter and Cambria. And this doesn't get signed till the day of pricing. So after. The bonds have been priced. Um, and everything's locked in. There'll be final terms and conditions are put out there. And both Cambria and the underwriter sign on to them to kind of lock in the final terms. And then, you know, the closing doesn't happen typically to a couple of weeks after that, but it's all locked in. Pursuant to this purchase contract on the day of pricing. There's also a continuing disclosure certificate. Now, um. When Cambria issues this debt, its certificates and C O Ps or bonds. Are going to be out there. The different investors have them. And from time to time, those investors may wish to sell their. Certificates on the secondary market. So with this continuing disclosure requires. The district to provide updated financial information every year to the M S R B. So that future investors aren't looking at documents that are ten years old and trying to determine whether they want to buy. The, you know, these Cambria wastewater certificates of participation. In future years. So every year. The district is covenanting to send its audited financial statements to M S R B. As well as other, you know, basic updates of information in the, uh, the official statement. And then there's on top of that. So that's everything associated with the C O Ps, but. In addition to that, there's some new regulations in California. That have really been around since about two thousand seventeen. Uh, and so under California government code. The district needs to adopt a debt management policy that meets certain criteria. In compliance with certain C D A or California Debt Advisory, Advisory Commission requirements. So the district already has a debt management policy that includes some of the requirements, but not all of them. So Albert is bond counsel, has worked to kind of fuse in. Uh, the district's existing debt management policy with the additional requirements from. California government code. And they're not very on risk. They just want to make sure certain. Uh, topics get addressed in the debt management policy. And there's also a disclosure, some basic disclosure policy stuff that gets. Adopted as part of this process as well. So that the district's actually going to have two resolutions. One is for. The financing resolution as well as, you know, approving the form of the documents. And the second's going to be adopting a modified debt management policy and disclosure policies. Just saying that the district's going to be, you know, good stewards in, uh, meeting its closure requirements, which include. Not only providing this annual updated information, but also if there's ever kind of a, a special. Events that happens, like the district fails to make a payment or defaults on its payment or does something like that. Then you have to notify the, the, uh, M S R B within ten working days. So if there's ever some, you know, major noticeable event, it has to be timely disclosed to investors. So anyway, um. That's the legal documents. Maybe I'll pause it there again and defer to, to Karen and company of.
You might, uh, you might say what M S R B stands for, for those who don't know what all the acronyms are.
Yes, sorry. There are many acronyms in the industry. The M S R B is the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. And they act on behalf of, you know, investors. Uh, to make sure it's a fair, transparent marketplace. And they, uh, operate a website. It's called the M I E M M A website. And you could look it up online, M S R Bs. M A website. And that's where investors these days can have access to information on all sorts of outstanding bonds and debt. You can search on every agency. And there is where the district would have to post its updated continuing disclosure information each year. Um, so all the investors can have access to it. So they're the key regulatory body over the municipal securities. Uh, industry, them and the, the S E C, the Securities and Exchange Commission. Give you more information than you need to know, but sorry, Kate.
Oh, Michael, that's it. Michael has a question too.
Uh, sure, the, um. I think it's going to be of interest, um, if there will be any additional work. Uh, needed to, you know, support the continuing disclosure, uh, other than what the. You know, audited annual statements, uh, already are. And so that. Uh, question that will come up. I don't know if, if you are, are a finance manager. Mrs. Fritz wants to address that or just be prepared to address it, you know, by the board meeting when it will, on the twenty first.
Yeah, no, good question. The answer is yes. I mean, obviously just uploading the audits, financial statements is easy. But there are also going to be a few additional tables that have to be uploaded as part of this annual disclosure report. One of them is the list of the top ten customers of the prior fiscal year. So that's something. Finance department will have to pull together. Another one is, you know, kind of one of the latest rates and charges they're being charged. That should be pretty easy for the district to provide for, on the wastewater. And this is only the wastewater side. And the third is also an update of the, uh. Debt service coverage that was achieved from the prior year, based on the audited financial results. Which should be pretty straightforward to calculate, but if anyone has any questions, you know. You know, I get, I periodically get questions from other agencies. And what do we need to do here again? So it's usually pretty straightforward that the finance departments can. Can handle on their own, but we, we try to make it so it's not very onerous. And Albert, I thought drafted a very good. Uh, continuing disclosure certificate where it didn't include all sorts of. You know, there's not going to be tons of, you know, you don't have to redo all your pension obligations and everything that. Each year, it's really just a few basic tables in addition to the audit. So it shouldn't take too much time.
I suspect the, the board will ask on the twenty first, what, um, when will C C S D need the. Debt management policy, uh, in place. Uh, I'm sure there'll.
Technically, that needs to be adopted thirty days before the wastewater certificates are issued. So that's why we're hoping it gets done at this meeting here, because C D A, you know, some agencies don't always meet that thirty day deadline in all honesty, but. That's what the, the, you're supposed to do. Have it adopted thirty days in advance. And there's going to be time out even after this board meeting. Is, you know, so the schedule. We're still, we're still going to need to get it, you know, bond rating, which may take a little longer than I have in this draft schedule. And then there's going to be the pricing. And then there's going to, you know, the bond marketing and pricing period. And then after that, you know, it's another few weeks before. The certificates are closed when, so there'll be enough time to meet that thirty day requirement.
Alex, I, I just jumped in real quick. On, on that debt management policy, um, you know, Alex sent me, um, late last week. The current, um, debt management policy that the district had. And so what I ended up doing was, um, blending in sort of the state law requirements. That went into place since two thousand seventeen with respect to what the debt management policy must, must, um, must contain. And incorporated the, um, current, um, uh, provisions of the district had in its policy. So. Um, and I sent that around this morning so that, so you'll, you'll note that I, I, I. Didn't take anything out essentially, um, from your current policy. And, 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 and then in preparing the, the, the new policy. So. So that, so the district is not, essentially what I'm saying is the district is not losing anything with respect to. This new policy in terms of what it already had in its existing debt policy.
Thank you. Very good, good.
I think Cheryl had her.
When, when will PG&E respond back and notify us what the actual cost is going to be? Do we, do we have the app? I mean, you said it was good till December. When, what is the timeframe with PG&E and? Coming back?
I think John Weigold, district manager, has been in communication with them. And I think John mentioned they were hoping to get something this week or soon thereafter. It should be very soon, but it takes them, it'll take them a little while to, they have to go back out to the vendors.
So would this put your draft schedule out of alignment? If it's, if it's, I mean, I know.
If they can't get back with stuff, yeah, it could affect the schedule a little bit, but we still want to try to get every, everything lined up, ready to go.
Really crazy question, Alex. Is, does this go into like an escrow account? How, how, I mean.
Oh, yeah. The money goes into when the, when the bonds close. The money gets wired by the underwriter. To the trustee on behalf of the district and there's a project fund that. That's designated for the district.
Okay.
So and again, there's a cost of issuance fund and there's a project fund. And the project fund. Is there's like a, a simple form that district just has to. Anytime they want to have a payment wired to a vendor or reimburse themselves for a payment. It's very easy to do.
It's a drawdown. It's a draw.
Yeah. So it's like you've got, I'm going to make up whatever it is, 12.1 million sitting in a fund. And it's going to be earning interest and stuff as well. And, and the districts can. Just draw upon it as needed.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. Well, that makes sense. I like that.
Director Stido.
Sorry, hadn't taken it down.
Oh, okay.
Well, next I just wanted to cover the schedule and already the schedule is changing a little bit. I knew when I put this together, it was only drafts. We put some target dates in there, but. I don't know how quickly we're going to be able to receive the bond rating. I was on the, the phone with the, the lead rating analyst. Earlier today, and she's going to do everything she can to turn around a rating as quickly as possible. But it's just, there's still some additional information she's still needed. So we were hoping to get it by July 20th before the board meeting, but it. It might not happen till, you know, soon thereafter. What we're aiming for is for the board meeting on July 21st. That's why there's been a lot of scrambling with these documents in recent weeks to. Get them and hone them and update them. And there's still some, you know, final tweaks and revisions, but. From my perspective, the documents are, are in very good shape. The POS still needs a little bit of work. But all the other ones are getting very close to be substantially final form. Again, it's. They don't get finalized till after, after the, the pricing. Because, you know, we want to make sure there's enough time for, you know, the district's council to review all this as, as well. Because they're not getting posted for the agenda, I think, until the end of this week. So we're, we're, we're just about there. At some point after getting a bond rating. Even before getting a bond rating. There's going to be the effort to go out and solicit bids from the bond insurers and they're going to wait to see the bond rating before they give their, their final bids. And then after hearing back from them. And, you know, making, assuming it makes sense, the, the preliminary official statement. Would at some point be finalized, well. For preliminary officials to be finalized and it would get posted, meaning it's done. It reflects all the ratings and the bond insurer and everything else. And then it's posted for investors and then. That's when the underwriter would start their bond marketing period to investors in the various funds. There's a lot of funds that buy this debt. Who they work with all the time. And then typically the investors, you know, like to have a week or so. Before they have to have this pricing period. So. Things may get pushed back a little bit, you know, we could end up delaying a couple of weeks. We're, we're not really quite sure yet. But when we originally did this, this was like our, our hopeful timing was that. We'd get the rating and the 20th, we'd, you know, get bond insurance bids, we'd get everything posted. By July 27th and then the week after like August 3rd or 4th. Have the bond pricing. Now that may end up being delayed by a couple of weeks, but that's. You know, it's not a big deal from our perspective. And then typically, you know, again, about three weeks later. We want to, you know, get all the documents finalized and signed. Which takes a little bit of effort and then everything would be done in time for a closing. You know, target date was in towards the end of August, but maybe early September. Sometime in that timeframe. So some of the stuff is still. A little bit up in the air, but we're getting pretty close. And. You know, something along this timeframe. The final, by the way, the, the pricing won't happen till, you know, August at some point. So. Even if it takes a little longer for PG&E to get back with stuff, we don't have to go out with the, the final pricing. Doesn't really occur. So. It doesn't, the, the final bond amounts wouldn't get established till that pricing date. So if PG&E. Took till the end of the month to come back with where their. You know, final updates are, there's still plenty of time to, you know, adjust the bonds accordingly. Assuming that the financing resolution had enough. Leeway in there to give the district authority to, you know, issue up to 13 million or whatever it is, 13 and a half million. Then the final amounts would get signed off on by the district itself. So there should be enough flexibility in there to do everything you need to do. But anyway, that kind of covers. Kind of all the details. I'll just. Turn it back over to Karen and we're happy to entertain any questions whatsoever. We've got all the folks here. Who are the, the experts. So. Any detailed question we can hopefully answer.
Let's take questions for clarification first and then take public comment and then we'll go back for discussion. Marvin, you have your hand up.
Yes, Alex, it's highly unlikely, but theoretically. The issue could not be fully subscribed. What happens in the event that all $12 million of the bonds? Nobody buys.
Yeah, I'm going to give you a quick answer that I'm going to also defer to, to Rick Brandis who. Has this, this, this is a common occurrence with bonds and COPs. You go to sell all 12 point million, yet there's only been bids for 10 million or something like that. And often that's when the underwriter steps and says, okay, we'll take the remaining ones at an agreed upon rate. We try to market them at three and a half percent, but no one would buy them. So we're going to bump it up to, you know. 3.55% and we'll take them in-house and try to sell. But Rick, you, you may have some more. Experience and detail on, on doing this from the underwriter's side.
You're right, Alex. We. Basically, we live up to the definition of underwriting. We underwrite the balance. Whatever is unsold. We underwrite them. We take them down and we own them. And then we, we work them off. We sell them out of our inventory. To investors. You know, over the next, hopefully just a few days, could be a couple of weeks. But the job of the underwriter is to provide you with that $12 million at the end of the day. And that's how we do it. We don't sell them all. We, we come up with the rest for you.
Okay, so the district gets the $12 million. Whether the issue is completely sold or not.
Correct. What we do is. In, in that contract between the district. And the. The district and the underwriter. You'll read language in there that we're buying all of it. We're, it's, it's pretty much the whole thing, not just part of it, but all of it.
Okay, Michael.
Yes, I thought I heard earlier you say that the. The bond rating. Well, the issuance of the preliminary official statements. Had be within seven days of receiving the bond rating. Did I hear that right?
It was after, once the preliminary official statements out there. What, what typical, well, there's no, it could be out there for a month, but. What happens is on the day of pricing. Now there's seven days to finalize if, when everything gets locked in.
Yeah, it's actually seven. Seven, it's actually seven business days. So it's a little bit more than seven days. So what happens is the district will sign the certificate purchase agreement once. Oppenheimer prices the, the COPs. Once that certificate purchase agreement is signed, then we move towards closing the financing and issuing those COPs to, to the investors that, that. Decided to buy them. So we finalize the, we turn the preliminary official statement into a final official statement, like, but including the final pricing information. So we have seven, seven businesses to do that and then deliver that final official statement to the underwriter. Who is obligated pursuant to MSRB provisions that it's subject to. To. Post that final OS on, on Emma. So that the investors that are going to ultimately. Buy these COPs at closing. Have that final, that final OS and make that ultimate decision. So that's, 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 that's the process for, for the final, I'm getting that to the underwriter.
Okay, are there any other questions for clarification? I don't see any hands. So let's see if there's any public comment. Hang on a second. Okay, Dr. Bentonhausen.
So Chairman Dean, apparently you are the host, not me, and so I can't bring anyone in. So if you might assign me as host, I'll take over those duties.
Okay, so let's see here. I can figure out how to do that.
Should be right-hand click on my name. Under and click on more in the list.
Okay, you should have it now.
All right. Okay, go ahead and Dr. Bentonhausen.
Thank you very much, General Manager Weigold and, and all the others. Presentation. I want to thank. Mary Maher for raising a very important question that I had written down to raise and that was about locked in. And whether the text was contradictory. So I hope this is clarified before this goes. I would like to ask a basic question and it might be that I simply was not paying significant attention enough. Do I understand correctly that nowhere in the calendar is Prop 218 given? In other words, since interest rates are an essential part of the revenue. For paying off the interest and principal of this bond. Does that nonetheless mean that because it's for some reason? The public does not have a say in whether this goes through other than by listening to the judgments of the elected officials? So what chance does the public have to speak on this after today? Other than in public comment for three minutes before the board meeting? Thank you.
Okay. We had a Prop 218 for the rate increase to cover. The funding for this, and I believe that includes all of the costs of this. Is that correct, Mr. Weigold?
The Prop 218 did not cover the financing. So the opportunity for the public would be today and during the board meeting. When it considers the. The. Preliminary official statement consideration and the resolutions.
I think what Dr. Bentonhausen was asking is if there was supposed to be a Prop 318 for the interest on this. And I don't believe there has to be just. Ms. Duffield have an answer for that?
Prop 218 process. Allows for us to have the rates to cover the anticipated debt service.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Chairman Dean, I defer over to Alex Handlers also for some more information on that.
Okay.
Yeah, basically what both they, they said is correct. The Prop 218 process specifically has to do with raising rates, as Pam just mentioned. There's nothing to do with debt financing. So. There is no vote, just like when the district authorizes its budget or, you know, does anything else. It's a, it's a board action that authorizes this. So the public's entitled at a public hearing, you know. When you adopt the financing resolution and whatever form of the documents. That's the time when the public can address the board or. I guess they could address the board anytime they want, leading up to that as well. But Prop 218 doesn't apply to, to, to debt issuances.
Okay, Dr. Bentonhausen, did that answer your question?
No, it does not. I want to be clear in my understanding or lack thereof. I thought, Mr. Handlers, in your presentation. You said that the interest rate on this bond, all of them over the 30 years. Would have to be payable out of the revenue into the water fund, which is gained only through. The rates that we rate payers pay. So I still don't understand whether there, we are obliged. To accept an increase in rates that we have not voted on as a part of 218. And if you say we do not have to vote on it as part of 218, but it's essential here, I don't get it. That seems another contradiction. Of which there were several in the presentation.
Alex?
Yeah, I mean, there's no contradiction. I mean, there's two completely separate things going on. One is the district doing rate increases. And that's what the Prop 218 process applies to in California. If you want to raise your wastewater charges. You have to go through the Prop 218 process and send notification. Out to all the rate payers, property owners and give them a chance to, you know. They could submit, you know, written protests back if they want. Now that's specifically for water and sewer rates only. There's. Nothing to do with when the district's adopting its budget or authorizing the financing or anything like that. So. When I'm talking about the rates of debt service, what we're talking about is the interest rates on debt. This has nothing to do with wastewater rate increases. This has to do with what rate you're getting on your fin, I don't know what, what rate you're getting on your financing. And so the districts. Already went through the 218 process to adopt its wastewater rates and charges for the next, you know, three to five years. That's done. Now what's being done is just a authorization to take on financing. Subject to certain limitations that'll be in the resolution. And there is no, Prop 218 has nothing to do with that whatsoever. Does that, I don't know if I'm quite addressing everything. So it's. Am I, am I not? Let me know what, what else I could add to, to that to help clarify better.
Okay, so, so I think basically what you're saying is the money generated from the rate increase, from the rates that we adopted. Covers the principal and interest of the debt financing.
I mean, the rates you adopt were sized to fund all your operating costs, maintenance costs, you know, admin overhead. Debt service on this financing as well as some other. You know, financial obligations that you have. You have a couple of, I think, equipment or vehicle leases and things like that. So. Those rates are already, you've already adopted them pursuant to the 218 process. And I know you do an annual review. Each year as well at the board level. But when the financing is authorized, that's a completely different, different. Resolution. And you, you are adhering to all the, all the legal requirements for approving a financing. That's Albert's specialty with his, you know. The bond counsel firm. So you've, you're adhering to all of that simply by adopting the resolution and. Typically a holding a public hearing on July 21st. But there's no, there's no like rate payer voting or submitting majority protest ballots or anything like that. That's specifically for. Adopting water and wastewater rates. Which has already been done.
Okay. Yes, Cindy. I'm sorry, Director Stido.
Not a problem. Okay. Never mind. I was just concerned that there were. I, I. I just would have referred to not have, to have a lot of laughter in the background and suggest maybe. That the. the mute button could have been used, thank you.
Okay, Tom, Michael, I'm going to finish taking public comment first and then I'll go back to you, if that's okay? Okay, Crosby and Laura Schwartz.
Good afternoon, Chair Dean and Chair Stidell and others in attendance. The proposed wastewater projects are all worthwhile and necessary projects. However, from a financial perspective, it seems it makes no sense to pay for the lower cost projects with thirty year installment financing. For example, ECM number two point oh affluent, affluent lift station baffle plate project is estimated to cost eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty one dollars. The district does not need thirty year financing to pay for that. Similarly, each project, starting with the lower cost projects, must be considered per payment from annual wastewater revenues. Only the higher cost projects, such as the lift station projects, require long term financing. The district should reduce the overall cost of the proposed wastewater projects by arranging long term financing only for the high cost ECM projects, while paying for the lower cost projects with annual revenues. The district should reduce the overall cost of the proposed projects even further by shortening the term of the financing from thirty years to fifteen or twenty years. Some of the equipment associated with these projects may require replacement before the loan or installment agreement is fully repaid. The district could end up paying for new equipment, replacing, replacements for the new equipment and interest financing all at the same time. Quoting from the eight nineteen twenty one Bartle Wells proposal, evaluate possible combinations of financing methods such as pay as you go cash funding supplemented by debt when needed. Please consider this good advice as you discuss ways of paying for needed wastewater projects. And I did some meta written comment that I'd like to have included in the record, thank you.
Thank you. Christine Heinrichs?
Thank you, and thank you Crosby for bringing up those points, I support those completely. I asked the committee to please consider reducing the term as well as the principle of this debt. Looking at amortization over thirty years, depending on the interest rate, of course, but approximately doubles the principal amount. Thirty years of amortization stretches out the term to add so much more interest with only a minor reduction in the installment payments. The district can't possibly carry out all these projects at the same time. So Cambria would be paying debt service on money it isn't even using. Please consider reducing the term to fifteen or twenty years to improve Cambria's financial stability. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinrichs. I don't see any other members of the public have their hands raised, Alex, do you want to address any of these public comments before I go back to the committee?
Sure, a couple of things, you know, the, the project, you're right, it does include many components. Some are lower cost and some are more, and even the larger cost projects have a lot of little components within them. But the way that at least is being proposed so far is that, hey, this is a big package of projects, it's been whittled down. And so this is what's going to be financed. And the, the cash flow projections did assume that the district was, there's going to be some other stuff you need to do too. You know, there'll be other repairs, things like that, that the district wouldn't fund on a cash pay as you go basis in addition to funding these projects. So it's not like these, but you need this chunk of financing to make it work, because you don't have a spare twelve million, do you have a spare eighteen thousand, sure. Doesn't mean you want to start using your, your cash on all the little projects, and you already have very low fund reserves on the wastewater side and draw them down, so we're assuming it's one big project, lots of components, and that you'd be financing it, but, and, and another caller is right, with, with the more interest you, when you take on debt, you have to pay principal, you also pay interest. And that interest is real dollar amount, just like repaying principal, just like when you pay, you know, your mortgage, a home mortgage loan. And the longer term it is, you know, the more interest payments go out there. At the same time, I'll point out, as you're borrowing at these tax exempt bond rates, and a payment in thirty years, there's also inflation going on, it's not the same as a dollar today, so in real dollar terms, even though you see all this, you know, interest accruing over thirty years, just as you do in your home mortgage, doesn't mean that in real dollar terms, you're actually paying a lot more than if you happen to be paying in cash upfront, because who knows what the inflation rates are going to be in future, you just know you're going to be locking in this payment stream. But the, one of the reasons for doing thirty year debt is to try to make it affordable, when we worked on the rates, there's kind of competing objectives, there's one is, we want to fund everything, but the other side is people don't want rate increases, you want to keep the rates as low as possible, so when you shorten that debt term from thirty years to twenty years to fifteen, ten, all of a sudden, the amount of debt service skyrockets each year. So instead of debt service being seven hundred and fifty thousand, all of a sudden, it's, you know, one and a half million dollars, because you're paying it off in half the time, well, that means now the rates have got to go way up to do that, so it's always a balance of competing objectives. And for all this time, we've been assuming, you know, thirty year financing. And if interest rates again drop in the future, or even if they stay the same, you're going to have abilities to refinance this at lower costs in future years, so we think for thirty years makes sense based on the nature of the projects, and again, it's a mix of projects. You're going to be paying principal every year, it's not like you don't pay principal till you're thirty. You're going to be paying principal off your two, three, four, or five, so you're not going to be double paying on, on you know, borrowing money for, for equipment and then repaying the equipment again at the same time, so. This is pretty common, how it's done in the industry, when you've kind of got like a medley of projects very akin to what the district has. And we're trying to do it in a way that, again, balances keeping the rates as low as possible with, you know, trying to get the, you know, the financing unfavorable terms as well, even if it is thirty years, it'd be great if you can pay it off in three years, but you just don't have the financial resources to do that, so. That's where the borrowing comes in.
Okay, I apologize, I neglected to ask Mr. Weigold if we had any other written comment.
There's no other written comment.
Okay, you had your hand raised, was there something else?
I did, I just wanted to address the issue of of, of, of managing the individual projects. That, that was, that project list was something that was run through all the committees and the board already. And those were the list of projects that we went out to bid with from contractors, so they bid on that full list. The moment you start taking items out, that price will readjust because that contractor has figured out how to do the projects in a manner in which he can do it at the lowest cost. If we were to pull a project out and have another contractor come in, come in and do the same job, it may very well be a lot more money.
Okay, I see that Crosby and Laura Schwartz hand is up, so I didn't know if perhaps Laura had something that she wanted to say, because I know both of them use the same connection. Laura, did you want to speak?
Yes, I did, good afternoon, I wanted to go back to Dr. Bentonhausen's question, because I don't think that was fully answered. I think part of the, the question is, okay, we are required to have income to pay the debt at a hundred and twenty percent. We do not have a lot of reserves to switch over there, as you were saying, for a buffer. So if we cannot make the one twenty and we don't have reserves, are you going to have to do a 218 to get rate increases, and what if it's voted down? Thank you.
Oh geez. Yeah, Alex?
Well, that's, that's a legitimate question, and occasionally it happens where an agency has taken on debt and everything's fine for a number of years, but something changes, and now they're not meeting their debt service coverage covenants anymore, and they don't, you know, have any money in the rate stabilization fund to do that. They, you need to get your rates up, it typically takes a while before anyone forces an agency to do this. Like, I've worked with many agencies that have been out of compliance with their debt service coverage covenants for five years in a row, it's not like, but you're supposed to, and at some point, the trustee could say, on behalf of bondholders, we require you to raise your rates, you're not keeping up your end of the bargain here, you legally signed on. So the answer is yes, at some point, you, you would never let it go to that phase, there could be a day when the district's no longer meeting its covenants, and it would be required to adopt rate increases to get back in compliance, that's always, that's, that's what you're pledging. That's your source of funding, that you're pledging to secure this debt service, is that you are going to have your rates in place to pay operating costs, debt service, plus that extra twenty percent buffer. But you, you know, we're assuming you're well above that twenty percent buffer, because you also have additional dollars built into the rates to support other costs, such as, you know, annual, other annual capital projects in future years and other things of the sort, so. But that's, that's the covenant you're taking on to secure this debt. No one's going to come take your treatment plan away like they might your house if you don't pay debt service payment. Instead, at some point, someone could hold your feet to the fire and say, hey, you're, you covenant to raise rates, you need to do so.
Okay, we have one more member of the public with the hand up. And then we're going to go back to the committee, Gordon.
Hello there, this is quite an interesting dilemma that we're in, it seems. I've been here roughly fifteen years. We've had, I think, at least two or three rate increases that I'm aware of, and they've all been sponsored with the expectations that these rate increases, we're going to cover the cost of all this work that's never been done. And I'm just, things like, we've forgotten what those rates have been, and I'm really not overwhelmed with the finance nor the INR's work here, because these capital ventures have been mentioned in this list way back when. And that was what those rate increases are supposed to be for, and now all of a sudden, we still don't have the funds to do it out of our regular funds, so. I'm trying to figure out how come you guys can sit there and agree with getting into a twelve million dollar contract, and we haven't even resourced the cheapest items yet, I think we're still waiting to, we barely got the Y screen in, and that was by two or three years delay. So your priorities are way screwed up. My question would be, is why, or how are you going to satisfy this twelve million dollars, and somebody's going to know what's all allocated for these projects? Because he just mentioned that you could spend this money on anything you wanted to spend it on. And so this must be up to the general manager, who hasn't done very well for managing these resources. He's been responsible for under his duration, nor the previous managers. So I'm saying you need to look closely when you're voting on this to move it forward in the interest of the public, not the interest of the CSED board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine, you already spoke, did you have another question?
No, I'll lower my hand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Michael had his hand up earlier, and then David has his hand up too, so you want to, did you still have a question, Michael?
Sure, I thought you were going to go with Dave first, right? This one. Why don't you check in and then check in with me? Let's hear from, from David and then, then check.
Okay, David?
First, I'd like to kind of help address what Crosby was talking about. Since I worked on a lot of these kinds of projects when I was actually making money. This, this, doing it in, in a package like this is much less expensive than than breaking out all these projects separately. And there's a lot of different reasons for that, one of the reasons is that you have one coordinated team of contractors and engineers working together to finish the project. If you start breaking out these smaller projects, you're going to have to bid them. It's required by the state. And if you're going to bid them, you'll have to have a hundred percent plans and specifications, not thirty percent. That's an extra cost. Then you'll have to bid it out, and then you'll have Contractor A doing some work and Contractor B doing some work, and Michael, who has worked on these kind of projects, will tell you that that makes all kinds of problems downstream for everybody, because there's a lot of finger pointing, et cetera, et cetera. This goes, gets all of the work done at an integrated wastewater treatment plant and, and, and some of the lift stations by one contractor who's responsible to handle all of that himself. They then work with the engineer and the contractor to complete as-built drawings so that you know what you've got, and that actually saves money also, because they're doing it as they go and they, and they get those done very accurately. So this is going to save the district in, in the estimates that we used to do, it was anywhere between fifteen and twenty percent right off the top, by, by packaging it all together, doing it all together, and doing it with thirty percent drawings and having as-bills fill in the gaps, so. I also have a couple of questions. One is, for Mr. Handlers, you've got all this team lined out and everything, but you haven't given us an estimate of what the fees are going to be. Can you give us a rough estimate on, you know, is this going to cost us eight hundred thousand dollars or, or something like that, what's, what's the fee schedule?
And all the fees are also going to be in the, what goes to the, the board, the resolution, there'll be a, a thing that like lists with all the fees and what the total debt services. The fees, there's cost of issuance for, you know, bond counsel, financial advisors, standard emporers, trustee, CSDA Financing Corporation, I estimate those are probably about the hundred sixty thousand dollar range. There's also underwriter fees for doing everything they need to do. And, you know, some of that depends on what the credit rating is at the end of the day and other, other factors, so that could be another, you know, a hundred thousand plus a little bit. And then there's bond insurance, which hasn't been bid out yet, but the preliminary estimates of that could be the bond insurance and reserve surety bond could total again around a hundred thousand or so, somewhere in that range. As a preliminary estimate, and again, it would be bid out after the rating, so altogether, maybe it's three to four hundred thousand dollars of cost related, three sixty, it was one sixty, two sixty, two seventy, eighty, three eighty, maybe three hundred, yeah, approaching four hundred thousand, it could be hopefully less at the end of the day, when you, when you factor all this stuff in and get the bids back and the bond insurers and everything else, so. That's, that's all the cost of issuance, and then everything else is the is the district's project fund.
Okay, and as I understand it, when the money is, is fully underwritten, that monies will be twelve point one plus a separate fund to pay those people, and they'll, they'll be paid directly from the underwriter, is that correct?
Well, not some, you're asking a good question, that's a little more complicated answer. The bond insurer is typically paid directly from the underwriter at closing to make sure that the bond insurer can sign off on the closing taking place, the underwriter is going to directly pay the bond insurance fees, again, it might, you know, could be in the hundred thousand dollar range. Then, then there's going to be money sent to the trustee for two purposes, one is the roughly twelve point million project fund, and then separately, there's a cost of issuance fund, and then there's requisitions that come out of that cost of issuance fund that would be paid by, you know, paid by the trustee, signed off on and approved by the district for, you know, bond counsel, financial advisor, rating, trustee for all those other separate fees, so. What goes to the trustee at the end of the day would probably be, you know, the twelve point one million plus another fund, I'm estimating about a hundred sixty thousand dollars that would use to fund those other specific costs of issuance.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Last question is, when will the project close financially so that we can start depreciating, you know, the asset that we will then have? Is that at the end of the thirty years, or is that at the end of construction?
Yeah, I think each Yeah, I think each project at the end of construction, as it, you know, is completed. Would then, uh, go on the district's finances. This is a new project and add it to the asset base and start getting depreciated. By the accountants and their, their accounting calculations. So as, as the projects are done. And I, I see raise on the, on the line here too. Uh, my understanding is a lot of these projects, especially these treatment plant projects are going to be awarded and done. You know, relatively quickly upfront, they're not going to take three years to do. They may be done. You know, in a year, a little over a year, the way those projects work. And at the same time, it'd be working, going on some of the other projects. So. A number of these projects may end up on the asset list in the next couple of fiscal years.
Okay, so Pam, you probably have something to say about this because didn't the auditor hold your feet on, on something on this?
No, it was not on this. It was related to a water project that was only designed and never constructed. So it's a different situation. So as these projects are completed. They will need to be put on the fixed asset list and depreciation will need to begin.
Great, thank you.
Is that it, David? Okay, Michael. I think you're muted.
Okay, am I back?
Yes.
Am I dead? Uh, echoing, uh, yeah, several comments, but the first issuing. Echoing, uh, GM Weingold's and Dave Pearson's comments about the bundling of the projects. To unbundle the projects that we've worked so hard to put together as a logical package. Just like, uh, Dave said, I mean, you'll have then, uh. You know, large additional C C S D staff costs to, uh, put the project packages together. You will have then multiple project scopes which will require separate mobilizations. It just, there's so many factors that increase the costs of those projects. It would be, um, yeah. That would be a major blow and in my view, um. Bad business, uh, decision for, for C C S D. Regarding, uh, Dr. Bettenhausen's great, you know, questions about the. The Prop 218, the, uh, it, it appears clear to me that C C S D has committed to. Within the Prop 218 five-year timeframe to living within the rate structure that has been established. And the. Uh, you know, managers, uh, Duffield, uh, the, the calculations have been done to. To sure that we're, um, we're. Able to live within those means, uh, given the wastewater revenues and costs. So. It, it appears that within the prop twisting timeframe that we've committed to, we are going to be. Able to live within the, um, the race structure and beyond that five-year period, um, it, it's. It, it's uncertain. The future is simply uncertain. Does that make sense?
Alex.
Yeah, it makes sense to me. Um, certainly, you know, after five years, you come back and reevaluate. And, you know, costs tend to rise, so there may need to be future rate increases and there may be some future projects that are on anyone's horizon right now that. You know, like you had emergency water, mean you had effects, maybe of something like that on the wastewater side. So there's always the possibility of these things. So. You kind of look long-term, put your best foot forward and. And then you come back and re- periodically reevaluate and adjust courses needed. So. Everything that's been done now is meant to fit within the existing five-year 218. That was meant to give the district the resources it needs for its operations, for debt service, as well as for additional. You know, a, a funding stream for some additional capital needs that you're, you're inevitably going to have over the next five years.
Thanks. And the third thing I.
Go ahead.
You know, the third thing I wanted to comment on, um, the, uh. The reason we have such a significant amount of. Capital project needs in the wastewater system is decades of deferred maintenance. And any concept that, um. Well, I mean, it, you know, the mindset of the last. Two or three decades of not providing sufficient rate increases, uh, in the, not providing sufficient funding to. The wastewater, uh, system. Got us to where we are today. So, um. I think, you know, the past is past, but you know, the, uh. Based on what. You know, project manager, the Danzo is, uh, discussed with, with us, the list of projects, everything. At least our committee has heard about the needs at the plant. We have, uh, a bundle of projects that will set us up well for. The next several decades and yeah, there'll be more projects, but this is going to catch us up.
Is that it, Michael?
Yes.
I'll call on you, um, Cheryl, as soon as Director Seidel.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Um, I, yeah, I'm, I'm just going to leverage on what's already been said. I mean. We, we've got a five-year period that we've looked at. And the Prop 218 rates were put into place. It was three years of incremental rate increases. Plus, we've got two years. Additionally, for, you know, handling the idea that overall prices will. Continue to rise in this country just because. Uh, things move on. Um, so beyond that time, it would be. It, it, I, I think logic will tell most people that, yeah, we're bound to have something we might need to reconsider for rates beyond that. Period, just because it is going to. The, the, the cost of goods will increase, the, uh, operation maintenance. For the plant, uh, may increase. There may be decreases because we're putting in new equipment, but there may be other things that need to be addressed. So. Again, the issues that we had by not having any rate increases at all, or even. The idea of what most people think of as just cost of living increases because. Uh, everything around us increases in cost. So. At a minimum, we're going to have to look at that again in the next five-year period beyond. What we've accomplished with the current 218 process. So, um, I'm, that's. From my perspective is that's common sense. Things are going to increase in cost. We need to keep the district healthy. So we need to anticipate those things and be responsible. In a fiduciary manner and make sure that the district stays healthy. So. Yeah, we will probably have to, as a district, have to look at things again in five years.
Cheryl.
I'd hate to go there, Cindy, but the bottom line, is there anything being done for grant funding? Or anything from our government on any of this? Because we read about. All the time that money's being dispersed. Wh- where are we in line for any funds? I guess we're not.
Okay. Well, I know that, um, our utilities manager and our general manager have been very, very active in searching for funds. Um, for infrastructure and for the wastewater treatment plant. And I don't know if, uh, either, um. Mr. Weigel or Mr. D'Enzo want to comment on, on their, what progress they've been made, able to make or what funds, and you know. How, how has the search gone?
Chairman Dean, as you recall, we had a joint committee look at. At grants at the beginning of this process or during the process and that came up empty, but we've continued to look. Uh, really hard across the board. Um, a- as you know, we, we won 375,000 from Congressman Cargo Hall's efforts. Um, for water. And what we have learned is most of the grants are going to water these days. Um, there are very, very few opportunities in the wastewater side. Um, but if, uh, if District Engineer D'Enzo's on here, he, he can talk to it as well. Uh, but that's been our experience to date.
Okay, thank you. Mr. D'Enzo, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add to that. I, we, just be assured we are looking at, we are looking down those avenues. Um, but, uh, and, and, uh, General Manager Weigold is right, uh, there are some opportunities in water that. That I would like to pursue. But right now, the, the wastewater, there hasn't been any roads in, um. Uh, for grants at the moment, but, um, but we are, we are trying to get those grants done.
Director Seidel, you still have your hand up? Did you have something else?
Yes, thank you. The, the other thing that folks need to realize when they, they're thinking in terms of. Uh, grants or getting monies from the government, um, there is a prioritization in the way that the government makes funds available. And generally, that means that the funds are made available first to communities in financial need. And frankly, the, this is, this is considered a community. Uh, that is well beyond that in terms of, um. It's looked at, it's looked at as a more wealthy community than most of those around us, for instance, San Simeon or Los Osos. And so. Uh, so where you may see fundings available for some areas. Within the county, um, there are reasons more than just the idea that there are funds available.
Okay, um, you know, most of the pictures on my screen are frozen. So if you're physically raising your hand. I may not be able to tell. So if anyone else wishes to speak, please click on that raised hand button because I can see those, but for some reason I'm not seeing. People move at all on my screen. You're all pretty much frozen. So I'm, I apologize, Cheryl, you may, you may have raised your hand before, but.
No, that's okay. My battery's low and I'm going to bail right now, but thank you very much, Alex. Nice presentation. Appreciate everything that you all have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Seidel, you still have a quorum without Cheryl, correct?
I hope so. Plug in if you don't.
Well, yeah, well, I, if you can plug in.
Okay.
Since you're part of the committee, that would be appreciated.
Okay, I'll, I'll hook in a plug.
Okay, does anyone else have any, uh, questions? I don't see any yellow hands raised. Um, Mr. Seber, if you have a question, um. Speak up because I know that you're on your phone for, for, um. You're, we can't see you on the screen and I know you're using your phone for audio. Um, Mr. Weigold, can you unmute him for just a minute so that we can see if he has a question?
Okay, all I can do is ask him to unmute.
Okay.
And remind him how he unmutes, uh, you know, star or what?
I think it's star six. Is it star six or star nine? Does anybody know?
How about now, am I unmuted?
There we go.
Yeah, there you go.
No, I really don't have any questions. I think everybody brought up anything that. You know, you could think of.
Okay. Okay, so, um, let me see. Thank you, Stephen. I don't see any other. I'm going to check public, the public again one more time since we've had our full discussion with the committee. Um, I see Crosby and Laura's hand up. You wanted, did you have one more question?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair Dean, for giving me an opportunity to follow up. I just wanted to clarify that in my comments. Before was not proposing to unbundle projects or to involve different contractors. I was simply talking about the way it gets financed. Contractors don't care. Where the money comes from, whether it's pay as you go or from a loan, as long as they get paid. So. Uh, there was some confusion about that. Thank you.
Okay. So I do know that when we did the rate increase and, um, Pam can correct me. Or Alex, that as we did the financial analysis, analysis. The rate increase for wastewater also includes an amount for some of the, the lower cost as you go projects. Is that correct, Alex? And, uh. Ray?
Ye- yes, but not the projects that are part of this 12.1 million.
It's projects.
Be like, yeah, like, hey, this is a, like a big project with lots of components. And you're right, some of them are smaller components, some of them are larger components, but. The intent was that that level of financing was going to take place to, to finance that level of projects. Uh, overall, so you can keep a little, you're right, if you, if you finance less, your already low fund reserves would be. Even lower, you're kind of, you're not operating from a position of having, you know, $10 million in the bank. Where you might say, hey, we only want to finance, you know, 10 million out of the 12 million, kind of starting from. A level where your, your fund reserves are already starting from a low place. You probably don't want to be drawing down, down anymore than they need to be. So we always assume the 12.1 million would all be financed. And that there is a little, you know, funding stream for additional stuff that, as I say, inevitably, you're going to. Have some other repairs or something you need to.
That, that's what I meant is that, that the financing patch is for the package of the 12.1 million in projects, but. If something else needs to be done, there still is money beyond what was needed for them. Because we have operations and maintenance and we may have a pump that needs to be replaced here and there. And that's, yeah, okay. Hey, anybody else? Okay, so I think we're done. Alex, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Well, nice seeing everybody. I appreciate all the questions that we, you know, if you have further questions as things progress. Please pass them on to your committee chairs and we'll, you know, continually try to address anything if you have any. Any follow-up questions as things move on. Um, so we're, we're here to, you know, we want to make everyone comfortable with this and get all their questions answered. So. Um, we'll continue to be available to respond to stuff.
Okay, and we also have another opportunity when you bring this to the board on the 21st. Okay, um, Director Seidel, did you have anything else that you wanted to add before we adjourn the meeting?
Uh, just to thank also Mr. Brandis and Mr. Reyes for. Uh, the efforts that I've seen, I've seen come across my computer in the last. Uh, week or so, just in terms of, uh, volume of this infrastructure of this, um. And the documentation requirements and for them making themselves available. Today also for the potential of questions that anyone from other of the committees, uh, wanted to ask and. To thank the, uh, the public for their questions and very particularly to thank the committee members also. For their questions and for feedback in their own areas of expertise, which helps all of us understand it. Much better. No, no one of us is going to carry sufficient knowledge of all the different facets of this to be able to be the. The last word in it at all. So anything of experience, um. And expertise that anyone has to offer and it is very much valued. So thank you all.
Yeah, and I, I want to add my thanks to that too. Um, thank you, Alex and, and, uh. Mr. Brandis and Mr. Reyes for, for all the work that you have been doing and, and we've had no shortage of documents to read. Throughout this whole process and I have read every word. So, um, I know that you're working very hard on this on the district's behalf and I just want to say how much I appreciate it. And appreciate you being available today for this discussion. And I appreciate all the committee members too for, for participating and all of their, um, questions and comments as well as of the public. So thank you again very much. And if there's nothing else, and if no one has any objections, we can call this meeting adjourned. And it is 416. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.